I would like to reconvene the City Council meeting and would ask for a roll call.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present?
Mr. City Attorney, do we have a closed-door session report?
There's no closed-session report this evening. However, the City Council did not finish discussions on closed-session items 4B and C, so I believe those will be continued to the end of the meeting. Is that correct?
That is correct. All right. Thank you. Excuse me. If you would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by (I keep wanting to say Assemblyman). Councilman Curry, followed by the invocation, please remain standing by Mr. Frank Carpenter.
Please join me in the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads and join me in an invocation. Heavenly Father, we come before you and thank you for the privilege of working and living in a city like Newport Beach. I thank you for these citizens who care enough to be here and participate in our political process. We thank you for these dedicated civil servants who serve us so well. I ask that you would give them wisdom based on their experience in the past, a vision for the future, and patience with one another as they work through things tonight. We ask a special blessing and ask you to watch over people whose lives and property are currently threatened by fires, and we ask your blessing on our time together tonight. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen. We have two presentations this evening. Is Deborah, is it Heidemann? Heidemann. If you would like to come up to the Diaz's, or to the microphone, actually. And I would like to read a proclamation to you and then give you an opportunity to make some comments, and then we'll take a picture. Excuse me. Whereas America is the land of freedom, preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizen soldiers; and whereas millions who have answered the call to arms have died in the field of battle; and whereas a nation of peace must be reminded of the price of war and of the debt owed to those who have died in war; and whereas the red poppy has been designated as a symbol of sacrifice of lives in all wars; and whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has pledged to remind America annually of this debt through the distribution of the memorial flower; now therefore I, Rush Hill, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire City of Newport Beach, Newport Beach Council, do hereby proclaim May 2014 as Poppy Month and ask that all citizens pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing the memorial poppy.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Kendall Madsen. I'm the Auxiliary President for Newport Harbor, the past president. And I'd like to introduce Rachel Heidemann. This is her 10th year and final year of being Ms. Poppy for Newport Harbor Auxiliary. And Taylor Howard is our incoming Poppy Chairman.
I will recite the poppy poem "In Flanders Fields" by Colonel John McCray. In Flanders Fields, the poppies blow Between the crosses, row on row, That marks our place in the sky, The larks still bravely singing Fly scarce heard amid the guns below, We are the dead short days ago. We lived, felt dawn, Saw sunset glow Loved, and were loved, And now we lie in Flanders Fields. Take up the quarrel with the foe To you, from failing hands, We throw the torch Be yours to hold it high But if ye break faith with us who die, We shall not sleep Though poppies grow in Flanders Fields. And Taylor is handing each one of you a boutonniere with two poppies in it, so.
seeing you every May. It just won't be May without you. Thank you for coming and thank you for all you do.
Our next proclamation is with reference to National Public Works Week for the recipient of Dave Webb.
And if I could have Chris Miller, Jamie Hook also join me. Thank you.
That would be great. You can do that. Whereas the public infrastructure such as streets, parks, water and sewer system, buildings, beaches, harbors, and waterways provided in our community serve as the foundation of our citizens' everyday lives; and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities as well as their proper planning, design, construction, and maintenance are vital, dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works and municipal operational officials and staff; and whereas the understanding and support of an informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and infrastructures such as water, sewer, streets, and highways, harbors, and waterways, and public buildings, parks, solid waste collection; and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depend upon these facilities and services; and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personal staff of public works and municipal operation departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform; now therefore I, Rush Hill, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18 to 24, 2014, as National Public Works Week in the City of Newport Beach. And I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to equate themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works and municipal operation officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Congratulations.
I've spoken enough tonight, but thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to bring this attention to the residents. They do a great job funding us and making sure that it's a great city, the shining city by the sea.
Well, we have a great public works department, and it does significantly participate in providing for our quality of life. So picture.
And a snappily dressed crew, as I might admit.
The City provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the City Council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has his discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for City Council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda.
Councilwoman DeGel.
Yes, speaking of some of our public works projects and really the fruits of our collective labor, I was out in the northern part of the city taking some photographs, and the first one is of the, of a new site that is now being demolished at the Uptown Newport. And that particular project was many years into planning, and they're going to build many homes and some mixed use and some green areas. And the area was very well planned. The reason that the site is so large is so that we have livability with a residential area. You can see in the photo here, this is a road widening project, coordination between the City of Irvine and the City of Newport Beach. So we widened the road. We repaved it. Also wanted to demonstrate the capacity that's available up in the airport business area. The next photograph is, we've been busy doing landscaping the city has up there, and this is the Bristol North, and that's coming in nicely. And then on Bristol Street South, thanks to the revitalization committee, this project came online. Yep, next one. It's another landscaping. We started with a little bigger plants there. I think that was a good move. And then next is, this is down at Big Canyon. We talked a little bit earlier in our budget session about some projects that we hope to bring online this year. The first one is a project underway, and that's a restoration. And in partnership with Irvine Ranch Conservancy and the Newport Bay Conservancy is helping out as well, where is a restoration site. So the larger plants someday will need to go. They're all invasive, and they're going to replant with something for the riparian habitat. I think there's another restoration photo as well. It's very tedious work, so we appreciate all of our volunteers. And then the next photograph is something unique to Newport Beach and probably perhaps a first in the region, and that is we're going to be building a constructed wetlands. We have an OCTA grant, and then we're looking for our local match, some potential settlement funds. So those are the projects there. And then finally, I know there's been a little bit of discussion about the 5K coming up on East Bluff Drive. You can see that photograph. That's East Bluff in the yellow. The surrounding areas are all residential, and our staff is doing what they can to mitigate the impact. So we have a code enforcement officer for, to make sure that amplification doesn't occur before 8:00 AM and so on. But it might be something after this year. It's the fifth year of the event that we could have some evaluation as to whether that's the best place, given the, all the residents in the area and the fact that roads closed and the retail area is inaccessible. So those are some thoughts there. And I think it was Willie Brown said once, it takes eight to 10 years to get something done in the city government. And many of these efforts have really been, you know, almost a decade in the making, but it looks great. Particularly happy with the improvements along Bristol. That's a gateway to our city. A lot of traffic comes off the 73 onto the Jamboree. And certainly we're preparing well for the future with our capacity improvements up in, in the airport business area. So thank you. And thank everyone.
Councilman Hinn.
Yeah, two quick things. There is a Balboa Village Advisory Committee meeting tomorrow at 4:00 PM at Explore Ocean down in Balboa Village. And on that agenda, the most important item is a discussion of the facade improvement program. And so we'll look forward to that and invite the members of the public that will be interested in that to take another step forward on our revitalization plan for Balboa Village. And then secondly, I had the pleasure of attending the Newport Harbor Yacht Club opening day party a week ago, Sunday, and it was a great event. And I think it's the best party in Newport Beach. I really appreciate it. I also, by the way, appreciate the work that our yacht clubs do, all of them, to maintain a very active, vital, interesting, attractive harbor throughout the year. Thanks.
Councilman Curry.
Well, like Councilman Hinn, I also had the honor to participate in opening day at Newport Harbor, as well as at Balboa and Bahia Corinthian Yacht Clubs. The opening of the season is one of the great Newport Beach traditions, and it was just amazing to see all the families there celebrating as they have, in some cases for 90 or almost 100 years, in the case of Newport Harbor, these traditions that we take for granted here in Newport Beach that certainly make our community special. Let me take note of the fact that over the years up here, I have had to endure various council members with their announcements regarding grandchildren. First, there was Councilmember Hinn, and then Mayor Hill, and then there was Mr. Selich, and of course, Councilmember Gardner. I am pleased to announce that grandchild Curry is on the way, and will be here in time for the November election, and I can join this august body of Braggarts in full, in full measure.
So noted. Councilwoman Gardner.
All my grandchildren were born before I got on the council, so I never had to make an announcement. I have no others.
Councilman Petros.
Last night, we had a very, very well-attended meeting at the old City Council site to take community input on possible locations for the West Newport Community Center. There is momentum now to investigate planning and site selection for a West Newport Community Center that would have amenities very similar to the Oasis and the Newport Coast Community Center. The two sites that have been offered at this point are at the end of 16th Street in what is now one of our corporate yards or utility yard, and/or the toe of the slope at Superior and Coast Highway. Both sites are large enough to accommodate that facility. Both sites have some wonderful opportunities, and both sites have some very, very significant constraints. The input that we received was, was very well thought and very well received. I would like to thank Ms. Detweiler and Mr. Batum for hosting that meeting. You ran a very, very good meeting. And I would encourage the public to take interest in this. This is going to be a significant addition to our leisure and recreation services. We need to hear from all of you as we embark on that planning. And then secondly, it's come to my attention by residents over in the, the West Bay area that the Dover Drive closure for the sanitation district work is having the potential to move traffic in the southbound direction to Irvine Avenue and into the neighborhoods at precisely the time that a lot of the children are riding their bicycles to Enson and to Enson Middle School and to the high school. Mr. Kiff, if I could ask you to have our traffic staff or our police staff take a look at that and, as needed, provide some encouragements or some enforcement so that those kids are able to make that trip safely and that people do respect the law and respect the health of those young ones. And that's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Selich.
Well, since Councilman Curry brought it up, the Selich family is expecting another grandchild also. And baby Selich will be arriving in July. So there.
Outdone. Outdone again.
Further information to follow. On Sunday before last, along with the rest of the City Council attending all these yacht club opening days, I attended the American Legion Yacht Club opening day, and it also was a great festive event with music and food and a lot of enthusiasm. I also attended the Balboa Yacht Club and the B.C. Balboa Corinthian, Wahia Corinthian Yacht Club opening day also. This coming Sunday, May the 18th, is the annual Balboa Island Art Walk from 9:00 to 5:00. It's on the South Bay front, and a lot of interesting and creative artwork. There's music all along the South Bay front. It's a great opportunity to get out and enjoy the, the Balboa Island Bayfront Walk, see some art, and maybe pick up a few pieces for your own home. And then as a teaser for June the 1st, just a reminder that it's the Balboa Island Parade, which comes every year, and most, if not all, the City Council members will be riding in the parade this year. And I'll have more information on that in a coming council meeting.
Thank you. And I have just a couple of items. I too had the pleasure of attending the Balboa Yacht Club opening, a grand, grand event, a significant event. I had the opportunity, my wife and I traveled down to Ensenada to receive the boats coming in for the annual, 67th Annual Newport Ensenada Race. And it was a very interesting trip, to say the least. And it's actually an event that the town of Ensenada takes very, very seriously and does a significant job of hosting all of the Americans that come down there as part of that activity. And so I look forward to helping that operation grow and become a even more meaningful race for Newport Beach. I will be attending the Balboa Art Walk and handing out the first mayor's award for the mayor's decision of the best piece of art. I'm sure that will be an easy task. And so I would, I would encourage any citizen that would like to come and participate and have their two cents put in, that I am more than welcome to, to that support. And with that, we'll go to public comments on consent calendar.
Public comments are invited on consent calendar, items 1 through 18. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. To the extent that any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Are there any council members that would like to have items removed? Councilwoman Gardner.
4, 5, and 9.
Councilwoman, Councilman Petros.
I have none.
I deserved that somehow or another. Councilman Selich.
None.
Councilwoman DeGel.
I don't have any to remove. I wasn't here for the discussion on number 3, but based on what I've read, I'd be voting no on that one, I think. Maintaining our, maintaining our records, I see no reason to, you know, delete them.
Thank you. Council, Councilman Hinn?
I have nothing.
Councilman Curry?
No items.
And I have no items. With that, it'd be appropriate for...
Mr. Mayor, actually, staff has some requests too. We actually would like to continue item 9 and not have you hear that tonight. And I know item 11 has stayed on the consent calendar. It really wasn't intended to be there. I would rather move that to current business because it's an $18 million item. My love affair with the new agenda system continues, I'm afraid. Put that on the wrong one.
And I'm sorry, that item number again is...
Sorry, that's item number 11. And then let me ask Mr. Mayor something. There was an email from Larry Tucker later in the day about item 3 and potentially retaining Planning Commission minutes indefinitely, just as we retain, sorry, audiotapes indefinitely, just as we retain council tapes indefinitely. Staff is amenable to doing that if that was a change that you wanted to make. I think that's a point that has been eloquently made, that the Planning Commission deals with other issues than, than many committees, and sometimes you want to hear the full nuance of that.
Do I see nodding of heads? What item is that, Dave?
3.
That's item 3. So it'd be amendment to 3 on the Planning Commission audiotapes, that those be kept indefinitely, as long as they survive.
Okay, we'll take that amendment. It would now be appropriate for a motion.
I move approval of the consent calendar with Councilwoman DeGel voting no on item number 3. Item number 3 being amended is recommended by Mr. Kiff. Councilwoman Gardner pulling items 4 and 5. And staff pulling item number 9, and then item number 11 being moved to current business.
Did we have public comment, or did I miss it?
It's next.
It's next?
And just brief... All right. At this point in time, we'll now take public comment on those items that remain on the consent calendar. Is there anyone that would like to speak to any of the items that remain on the consent calendar? Please come forward.
And just briefly, before public comment, in regards to item number 6, Mayor Hill, did you have, did you want to recuse yourself in regards to that item?
Resolution supporting submission of grant applications under the Orange County Transportation Authority.
I'm with the...
We believe the project is within 500 feet of your, of your property.
I see. I would sure like to recuse myself from that.
I'll add that recusal to my motion.
Thank you, Mayor Hill, and members of the City Council. My name is Jim Mosher. Of the items remaining on the consent calendar, it really would be helpful, I would think, if someone could prepare a little summary so people at home know what you are passing when you pass the consent calendar. I think it's perhaps not even obvious to some of those in the audience. Item 3 about the adoption of a retention, records retention schedule, modification to it. I am pleased that you heard the comments from Larry Tucker and agreed with them with the Planning Commission, and I hope some future, more enlightened City Council will understand the importance of keeping the recordings of the other city meetings as well. As I said at your last meeting or study session where you considered this, the really critical thing is not just retaining records, but retaining them in such a way that the public and the city staff has efficient and user-friendly access to them. And that is something I understand city staff is working on, but something we have a long ways to go, to where you can look through and quickly find if something was reviewed at a board, commission, or committee meeting. Item 6, one would not know from reading the agenda. It just says it has something to do with Measure M2 grants. And it's a $125,000 commitment on the part of the city to obtain $375,000 from the Orange County Transportation Authority. What one would not know is that that money is for replacing the grass medians on Irvine Avenue in Jamboree with so-called California drought-friendly planting, like we saw on Bristol Street North and South. I don't know if that's a good or a bad idea, but it seems to me that it's being adopted or being committed to with very little public outreach. And it's a matter in fact that I would think the Park Speech and Recreation Commission should have been consulted about, because under the charter, they are the public venue where there's supposed to be discussion of what we do with our city parkways. And I see I still have a minute left, so I will speak about item 15, which is a, I find outrageous agreement with a company called Russo and Steel that is going to be putting on an auto show and is wanting to use the city's streetlights at no cost to them, apparently, for commercial advertising. They're going to hang banners there, advertising their for-profit activity. The City Council some time ago adopted a policy, as the City Council, as the agenda says, Policy L16, related to the use of the city's streetlights for banners. It had three key provisions to it, and this proposal is violating all three of them. One, that it be an event open to the public and free of charge. It is not free of charge. That it be conducted by a nonprofit corporation. It is not. And that it be cosponsored by the city. It is not. And there's a further problem. I'm not even sure that the event that we are giving this free bonus to is even acting in a way that's consistent with the coastal development permit that presumably the Newport Dunes, which is where the event would be held, it is operating under. They tried to get an approval, as I understand, in Huntington Beach, to use a public parking lot, and withdrew that at the coastal... And there's a further problem, I'm not even sure that the event that we are giving this free bonus to is even acting in a way that's consistent with the coastal development permit that presumably the Newport Dunes, which is where the event would be held, it is operating under. They tried to get an approval, as I understand, in Huntington Beach, to use a public parking lot, and withdrew that at the Coastal Commission meeting that was held here last November because it seemed inconsistent with coastal access policies.
Very much. Anyone else that would like to speak?
Just before that, I would like to add that to the ones pulled. I had thought that Mike might have done it because he had mentioned it in a study session, and I had then taken it off my list, so just for further discussion. But also, as far as the medians, that was taken, that's considered a water quality issue and water in general, and that was taken to the Coastal Bay Water Quality Committee, which ranked various sites for remediation. So it has gone to a city committee.
I'll amend my motion to reflect the Councilwoman Gardner pulled item number 15.
All right. Any further...
I did have a, on that median one, is that a plan that, I'd like to see that plan. There's no plan in here, what you're planting?
Well, yeah, there wouldn't be. It's a good point that you're all making. This is actually just authorizing us to submit the grant application. It doesn't bind us to accepting the money if we get it or developing a project. So our process is to ask you to, for permission to even apply.
Right, okay, so I get that, appreciate that. And then who is going to design that? We're going to hire somebody to...
Yet to be determined. I think we'll work closely with the Water Quality Committee and certainly welcome anyone's input on that.
Yeah, I'd like to see what that's going to look like.
Any further members of the public like to comment on consent calendar items? Seeing none, please vote. Vote again? What's going on?
Hold on one moment. Nothing's showing. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
Thank you. Item number four, Councilwoman Gardner?
This is about the Cronodamar Business Improvement District, and I don't want to go into the whole history of it, but over the course of the last year and a half or so, we had had discussions with the bid. Bid was not real happy with the way things were running, and the city wasn't real happy with the way things were running, and so we came up with a different way of doing things, and yet we still seem to be at a bit of an impasse. We had a preliminary discussion as to paths that we could take, and I feel that before we make a final decision on whether we should or should not contribute the $60,000, that we should have at least a partial resolution and some progress in the suggestions from the bid as to what they would see and what changes they would like to make, so we can evaluate it as a whole. So with that understood, if that will be communicated, I don't see Bernie here as the president, I do see a member of the board here, in Jim Walker, oh, hi Bernie, that we can then address it. That won't affect the timing, I don't think, we still have time to... What we're doing tonight is simply saying we will further consider this. Is that correct?
Well, tonight, we are, you're right, adopting the resolution of intention to renew, but also their budget and their annual report is before you for considerations. We would want to continue those items, at least the budget, if council wants more information.
All right, then I would move to accept this with the exception of the budget, which I move that we continue.
There is second to that motion?
I'll second that.
All right. Any further discussion on that motion? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this topic? Seeing none, bring it to the council, please vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
Thank you. Item number five, Councilwoman Gardner?
I sat for a while as a liaison with the Restaurant Association, and over the course of time, it became clear to me, at least, that there were some, as far as the way it was structured, some of the members really probably weren't getting much benefit out of it. It's my understanding that there has been discussion on the part of the Restaurant Association as to making some alterations. And again, I would, before we make a final decision, say at the next meeting, I'd like a report on what sort of things are being considered, what kind of timeframe there is, so that we can look at it again, in the whole matter of what's coming forward. With that, though, I will move the current item.
I'm a little confused over your motion.
I would like to see from the Restaurant Association what plans they have for changing their membership and making their association more relevant.
Out approving the item, you're asking for it to be brought back?
No, no, she's approving the item, she's asking...
We will have to have a second vote on it, is my understanding.
Yeah, this sets up the discussion for two weeks from now.
Yeah.
And I think we're clear as to what Ms. Gardner is asking.
There is a, the budget, and this is also requested to cover the administrative and accounting costs from the city, so if that's contingent upon this information, we might want to continue this budget as well.
All right, then also continue the budget as we did before.
So it's, accept the annual report, make the notice of the hearing, but not accept the budget at this time.
Yes.
Is the motion clear? Or is there anyone in the public that would like to talk, speak on this?
Hi, Jim Walker, President of the Newport Beach Restaurant Association, Mayor Hill and Council. As you know, the Restaurant Association has gone through a lot of transitions in this past year, and part of what that transition has created is really a financial burden on the Restaurant Association. And that financial burden, to be specific, is in our ability to do some marketing that has relevance to the association. Right now, the way the budget is set, and I've explained that to some of the members on the council, some of you have seen it, Dave Kiff has seen it, it really puts us where the tail's wagging the dog, in the sense that there's more money going to administrative costs than there is to marketing. And I think the city council needs to make a decision. Do you want to have a restaurant association, and do you want to have an effective one, and do you want to have an effective marketing program? Currently, we have partnered with Visit Newport, pretty much at the request and support of the city council. In doing so, that's been a little bit more of a burden on the Restaurant Association. In addition, we are paying close to $40,000 for administrative costs as well as accounting. When you add all that together, it leaves the association with a meager $42,000 or $44,000 to do marketing for 400 members. That's pretty insufficient and almost, in, just, it really has no influence on the outcome. Right now, we have an additional 4,000 seats that have been added to the Newport community and the restaurant arena. As I've talked to you before, there's about a five, it's probably now a six-to-one ratio of restaurant seats to customers in the population of Newport Beach. It's vital to us that we get out there and we promote restaurants outside of Newport, and when we have such a minimal amount to do so, it's pretty ineffective. So I would, I understand what Nancy Gardner wants. We have been in discussions with Visit Newport. We are working on a plan to reach out to our constituents and try and get more participation on the part of the Restaurant Association members. The problem being is that there's no teeth in what we do. There is a problem in terms of people that don't pay their bid fees, there's a problem in people that don't, they say they have 10 employees when they really have 50, and there's a difference in the amount that they should be paying, but there's no ramification for that. So, you know, part of it is our responsibility, but frankly, I feel there's part of a city's responsibility to take on and help us in that endeavor. But in the meantime, what you're asking us to do is to take on additional expense and minimize our ability to be effective in the city of Newport Beach. And if that's what you want, then that's what you're going to get. But it's not satisfactory to me, and it's not satisfactory to the Restaurant Association to be able to survive. So I would ask you to go ahead and approve the amount of at least taking care of the additional financial burden that we face, get us through this year, and try and get us to a point where maybe next year, we'll be on better footing. As it stands right now, we are not in a position to do Restaurant Week next year because we don't have the financial ability to do it. And I think that's going to be a big loss to the city.
And did we not cause a problem by not making a decision early enough last year that it impacted the Restaurant Week last year because of the planning schedule?
That's correct, yes. We lost $25,000 on Restaurant Week last year because we didn't have the time to prepare for it and do an adequate job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public that would like to speak on this item? I would like to offer a substitute motion that we would approve this item, and with that approval, waive the city administrative fees for this one year to allow them the time to regroup.
Okay, I'm sympathetic to the situation of the Restaurant Association and what's occurred here, and my understanding was that, well, as you mentioned, Jim, you're working on a plan here to sort of reinvigorate the situation and perhaps address some strategic issues on this, and I'd be very interested in hearing about that plan, understanding that I'm sympathetic to the need to, you know, help you through here for another, for another period of time, but I'd appreciate hearing the plan, a little more about the plan, I guess, before we did that, that's all. So is two weeks really going to make that much difference to you? If you'd like to come back up and comment on that, that'd be fine.
Well, I think that we're kind of on two different levels, Mike, in the sense that right now, we're looking at finalizing our budgets and having a ability to move forward. In terms of the plan that we're talking about, as you know, I've been in contact with Gary Sherman, we're trying to work together and develop that plan. I'm not sure how long that's going to take. You know, we're looking at probably getting into the fall before we can really put something together that has a tangible direction. One of the things that we're looking at and we're trying to study, and, you know, I've talked with Mary and Tara, that, A, should we continue as a restaurant association as a bid? Should we break away and become a marketing association? You know, there's a couple of different options here, whether or not any one of those is the best option. Personally, I feel that the bid is our best option, because I think if we try and break away and become a marketing association, we're just not going to have the financial strength to start that association, number one, and number two, to gather enough members within the community that's going to make it an effective association. I think if we can take the bid and modify what we've done, but we're going to need some additional resources in order to accomplish that. So I'm looking at the additional money, not only just the taking care of our accounting and our administrative right now, but down the road, we're probably going to come to you and say, all right, this is our plan, and this is what we're going to need to accomplish the goals that we feel are going to be effective for the Restaurant Association. And I'm hoping within that time that we can do more of an outreach and get more of the Restaurant Association people that are not currently paying their bid fees to do so, which would also help us financially. So there's kind of a multiple, you know, things going on here that we're trying to look at, all the avenues. But to try and answer your question, at this point, right now, I would like to get this budget done, I would like to know that we have the, at least the $40,000 that is currently allocated for the administrative and the financial part taken care of, and then come back with a plan that looks at what else can we do down the road to make the Restaurant Association more effective.
That plan, are you going to be considering restructuring the membership of the bid, or is that something you're...
Yes. And the other thing, you know, we have, as you well know, one of the things that we've been faced with, and we're trying to work out a relationship, is we have a couple of people that have come into town that are looking to put on the Food and Wine Festival of Newport. We're trying to figure out a way to work with them so that hopefully it will be a successful venture for both. We haven't yet come to all the terms, we've been engaged in several meetings, so, you know, they want the Restaurant Association to pretty much sanction that event. We're more than willing to do that, but we want to make sure that we are able to partner with them in such a way that it's beneficial for both. So we are working in that arena because that's coming up in September, so that's another, you know, issue that we're working with right now.
Well, I guess from my perspective, as distinguished from the resident, or the business bid in Cronodamar, you really have engaged in a meaningful relationship with Visit Newport Beach to try and reform your marketing, and so I do appreciate that, that there was a good faith attempt on the part of the restaurant bid to really move in that direction, and I, my sense is that that's still not had a chance to mature the way it perhaps can, to your benefit and to the benefit of the city.
Well, once again, there was kind of a delay on that, you know, and in all fairness to Visit Newport, their contract wasn't signed, the money wasn't put in place, and so there's been a delay in their ability to kind of gain traction. Fortunately, we have the person by the name of Polly Peak, which is kind of our representative from Visit Newport, that is working diligently right now on an outreach program to our membership.
I guess, just my point of view, in light of all of that and the fact that it's going to take a little while for you to produce your plan, I'd support the motion on the table to go ahead and approve the $40,000.
Councilman Selig?
Yeah, I'm going to support Councilmember Gardner's motion. I'm supportive of the Restaurant Association, but she's spent the last year or so, a lot of hard work, coming to all your meetings and trying to make this new system work, so just out of respect for all her work, I'm going to support her motion.
I actually haven't, I stopped going a year ago. Yes, I feel...
Here are a vote, Councilman Selig?
I feel that the $40,000 is a commitment we've made. I have no problem with that. My concern is that, is the $60,000 or whatever you're asking for, the administrative fees, that we had gone into the year with both the bids, the bid and the Restaurant Association paying. I've asked to give us two weeks to look at the bid on that, so I would ask for the same thing here. I'm fine with going with the $40,000 we've already committed, but to hold off and have us really look at this administrative fee and how we want to handle it, because that's, all of a sudden, we're at $100,000 for each bid. And that's, I don't know, that's a lot of money. But that's, so I will not support the substitute motion.
I guess my reason for making a substitute motion is I was involved in the creation of the bid, of the bids, and the commitment the city made at that point in time was to handle the accounting without charge, and so I'm rather frustrated with the city now coming back and attempting to charge the bids for that amount of money, and so that's part of my...
But the reason that happened was that the bid was unhappy with the city handling it. I mean, I went through all those discussions, so it wasn't like suddenly the city walked away and said, no, you're on your own. There were, well, there was almost a year of discussions about how we would get around this fact that the bid was unhappy with dealing with the city in that way, and that the city was also unhappy because we were spending a lot of time after we left, after we lost our economic development team. So I, not simply that the city just said it wouldn't pay anymore, let's clarify that.
The only thing I respond to on that, Nancy, is at one time, we had more bids than we currently have, obviously, but I don't think that the restaurant bid was ever one to complain about how things were being run. Frankly, we're very happy with how they were run at the time because we had a situation where we were getting our financials on time, we were getting accurate financials, and pretty much our bills were getting paid. So, you know, I would like to take the Restaurant Association out of that equation.
Well, I'll be supporting her motion, and I have a question as far as the Visit Newport group. It seems as if the Food and Wine Festival, that would be a natural for them to be taking a lead on. What is their role in that festival? Where is it taking place?
Taking place here.
Obviously in the city, but where?
On this property.
Oh, right here?
Yes.
At Civic Center?
Yeah.
Okay.
And in terms of their role, my understanding is they are being supportive in terms of marketing. Again, we're trying to interface with the Food and Wine Festival and have the Restaurant Association, you know, get more restaurants to participate, get more support from the liquor companies and what have you. So we're trying to work with them at this point.
And then who is the sponsor of Food, who's spearheading the Food and Wine Festival?
It's a gal by the name of, I think her name is Stephanie, and her partner, I don't, I should know that, I don't have that information in front of me, I got an email from her today, so.
It's a private party.
Yeah.
There is an independent, actually, she's formed a company now that's putting on the Food and Wine Festival. They're going to be submitting a special event permit application to the city, and they are requesting that they use the civic green for the festival.
Yeah, I see these taking place in other parts of the country, so that's, thanks.
Mayor Hill?
We have, yes.
I just want to chime in that I'm going to be supporting Councilmember Gardner on this. It's just two weeks. This started as a $40,000 obligation, it's now at a hundred... It's now at 100. We're hearing it could well go over that. I don't know what this is absent a plan, and all we're asking for is two weeks to understand what the future may hold for both of these bids.
I guess the point is, you will not have that information in two weeks.
We think we can probably help pull that together, knowing the importance of keeping to a schedule here and making sure Jim and his colleagues there know that, what their budget will be as of July 1. Remember, you can't, the money can't be expended until you approve the overall city budget, not the bid budgets. The bid budget approval is, it's kind of a quirky way of doing this, but it doesn't commit you to expend the funds. Your adoption of the city budget commits you to support the bids in that process. So I don't see, I think I'm seeing Tara and Mary nodding that we can have two or three meetings here between now and then and probably bring that back to you in pretty good shape in two weeks.
May I have one more comment here? So, well, I can count to four. So it's, one thing that I would like for you to do, though, when you come back in two weeks, I'd like to have a clear view about how aggressively the city can help collect these bid past dues. I'm still not satisfied that we've got a really full, aggressive understanding of what can be done to collect these past due amounts and what sanctions can be brought to play to do that. Here as I can tell, there's a number of examples that are just inexcusable here. And so I'd like that to be part of the city's presentation.
All right, I too can count, so I withdraw my motion at the second. We'll draw.
Okay. Thank you.
So, thank you.
So the original motion is on the table, then? To defer the extra money thing for two weeks?
Yes.
I will refer to the city attorney for that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we, the report has to be approved, but not the budget component of it, and then adopt the resolution.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak on this? Not seen that, we'll bring it back. Please vote.
Is this...
Yeah, we're going to try it. All right, item number 11, staff, please.
Well, I suppose we could have that item right now as well. So I'll ask Dave to make a brief presentation about this. This is the grand approval of the largest component of the Marina Park project. So with that, Public Works Director Webb.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Happy to bring this project forward tonight. This is the third phase of several. This is the Marina Park Ward of Phase Three, which is the construction of the buildings, the 23-slip visitor-serving marina, the playgrounds, the picnic areas, the basketball courts, and the parking lots, and the cafe. If you recall beforehand, we've done two phases already. The first phase, we've already completed, that was the removal of the Mobile Home Park, and also the saving of the palm trees and putting them in a holding position. We're currently in the Marina construction phase, doing our bulkheads and seawalls right now, and we'll be doing our sand movement in the near months. And now with this project kicking off, this is the major component of the project, we're, we had seven, actually, I'm sorry, we went through a pre-qualification process on this. We had 19 pre-qualified contractors, 14 of them picked up bid packages, seven of them submitted bids. We had, in your staff report, you have a list of the bids that came in. This project also had a component to build the Girl Scout House as part of that project. And we had an option to either build it with the Girl Scout House or without, depending on what the Girl Scouts got in their bid and if they chose to be with us. In your package, you'll see that the bidders are broken down by the option with the Girl Scout House, and TB Pinnock &amp; Sons was the lowest bid on that combined bid, and that was 19,404,000, et cetera. The Girl Scouts looked at this bid, and it wasn't exactly within their estimates and where they wanted to be on the bid, so they decided they will not be joining us on this project. Under that arrangement, then we go down to the lowest base bid, and the lowest base bid was submitted by KPRS Construction of Brea. They submitted a bid of $18,748,000. I'm sorry, 18,407,48,000. So tonight, we bring this to you, and we move you recommended to approve this bid package and move forward with the project.
Mayor?
Yes.
There was an issue with the Girl Scout component, and that the initial agreement said, if you don't do it, then you can build your own, but you have to wait till we're through, in essence. And they've asked us if there are times that they might be able to coordinate, how does staff feel about that? I mean, I don't want, I don't want to do anything that holds up our project. I think that we all appreciate the Girl Scouts. We show our appreciation by our very low rental to them of $1 a year. I don't want to make it any harder for them, it has to be, but frankly, our project, for me, takes primary position. So are there ways that we can work with them, or is it better just to have them wait until we're complete?
Thank you. As you know, the lease calls for them to wait till after we're done, but I do believe there's a possibility we can work out something. We've already started that discussion. I'm going to meet with Nancy Nygren tomorrow and start talking about that. We've also met with our contractor, KPRS, and started that discussion. It's a little more complicated. Obviously, when you get two general contractors on the same site, you have conditions where they could be pointing fingers at each other, getting each other's way. There's usually some little complexities go with it, so, but staff's open to explore that. Can't guarantee exactly how it'll come out, we need to start looking at how to do that. We would have to change the lease agreement and probably have some kind of agreement, again, with the Girl Scouts on how to move forward on that.
All right, any further questions?
How will the council be informed of any change orders?
We are working with the subcommittee, and we're also bringing those change orders. You'll notice in your package tonight, we have a detailed cost evaluation of the project with the actual costs and the budgeted costs, and we're submitting that back to council on an occasional basis, so you can see where the change orders are. Anything significantly, we are talking to these three councilmembers who are overseeing the project.
And a subcommittee, it's legal for a subcommittee to approve new financial burdens for the city?
Well, they're not approving any financial burdens, we're just keeping them abreast, that's like a guidance on where we are in our change orders, but we're not having an approval of that. And then we have, again, bringing back to council every once in a while a detail where the project is budget-wise and cost.
Okay, so what's once in a while?
It's how often you want it. We could roughly send you a monthly, it doesn't change that much, any significant change orders we could alert you of. What, we're thinking maybe $20,000 or more, maybe we could bring your attention.
Right, well, I would see, since you have a project log anyway, is maybe monthly, it doesn't have to be agendized, but just shoot the council a spreadsheet of the costs and where they're at.
That'd be fun.
We do meet, the subcommittee does have a standing meeting monthly as well.
Right, but we don't know what you're doing? And we had this issue with City Hall where we were surprised with quite a few change orders.
Yeah, and I'm happy to report and go over the budget on it. We're basically under budget right now and running on schedule, but we can surely keep you informed of that. Maybe quarterly even, we can just send you an overall cost, if that's okay.
Again, why not monthly if you have the information?
I can do monthly, too.
Okay, thank you.
Further comments from the council? Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this item?
A little bit taller. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, Mr. City Manager and staff. I'm Nancy Nygren, the CEO of the Girl Scouts of Orange County, and I'd like to augment Dave Webb's comments a bit with my own. First of all, congratulations on your successful bid for Package Three of the Marina Park project. I'm sure you're all very anxious to get going. As you know, the Girl Scouts declined the bid alternative that would have constructed our new Girl Scout Leadership Center. While there were several other more attractive bids for the bid alternative, unfortunately, the bidder with the lowest combined bid for the city's package and the Girl Scouts was unacceptable to the Girl Scouts Board of Directors as fiduciaries for the Girl Scouts, which is a nonprofit. This bid alternative was approximately 900,000 higher than the engineering's cost estimate, 40% higher than the estimate went in as. With the Girl Scout rejection of the lowest combined bid, then as you know, the city's now able to accept the lowest base bid from KPRS, which is what you're considering tonight, which will actually reduce the city's costs for Package Three by approximately $650,000. And it aligns almost exactly then with the bid estimate that the city had for their Package Three from Cumming, who was the cost estimator for both the city and the Girl Scouts. It's our belief that through our own private bidding process, we too may be able to receive a bid in line with the Cumming estimate. With approximately $250,000 of Girl Scout funds already invested, we're very interested in seeing the development through completion. It's our hope that the city will authorize Girl Scouts to build concurrent with the city's construction, pending the Girl Scouts' acceptance of a bid through our bid process. The city's not only in a position to allow the concurrent construction, but also to allow it in a manner that does not either, one, cause bids received to escalate through additional stipulations, or two, add additional costs to the Girl Scouts beyond our construction bids. We would ask that you consider these requests in the spirit of partnership and cooperation between the City of Newport Beach and the Girl Scouts of Orange County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this topic?
Mayor Hill and members of the city council, my name is Jim Mosher. With respect to this subcommittee that we have heard reference to, I assume what we're talking about is the City Council Committee of three members, which in the city clerk's roster is referred to as the Building Ad Hoc Committee, whose name has a little asterisk next to it. And the asterisk means that it does not meet pursuant to California's open meeting provisions, the so-called Brown Act. I would like to remind the city council and the staff that there's three conditions for a city council-appointed committee to be exempt from the Brown Act, from exempt from having noticed public meetings. One is it consists of less than a quorum of the appointing body, and three members are less than a quorum of seven. The second is that it be advisory only, which means that the discussions it has are for the only purpose of bringing back a decision to the appointing body for that body to make the decision. Whether that's been the case or not, I can't really say, but I think in the case of the City Hall, the public certainly had the impression that the ad hoc committee, or I should say the Building Ad Hoc Committee, was making decisions without further, doing more than advice, actually making decisions that the staff was following. The third requirement is that it not be what is called a standing committee. It is supposed to be an ad hoc committee, which the name says. Ad hoc committee means the committee is appointed for a specific purpose. When it completes that purpose, it is finished in a finite time with a finite mission. This Building Ad Hoc Committee has existed since 2003, according to the city clerk's record or roster. It went through a little reorganization in 2008, but in its current form has apparently existed for six years. That doesn't sound very ad hoc to me. It's not appointing somebody to come back with, to investigate a problem and come back with a solution to it for a decision by the main body. And I might also point out that in the clerk's roster, it says the term ends upon completion of the City Hall and Park Master Plan improvements and the Oasis Senior Center. It was in 2003 originally appointed to oversee the Oasis Center. Seems like we always have a building project going on, and we seem to always have a need for this committee, but it neither, it no longer seems to me to be either ad hoc nor purely advisory. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate Mr. Mosher's periodite explanation about what ad hoc committees are all about, but this was not the committee that he was referring to.
That's absolutely correct. It's more of a working group, it's not a building ad hoc committee. So the way he was referencing is not what's going on here.
Are there any further comments by the public on this matter? Not, then I will bring it back to the council. Do we have a motion on the floor? I don't believe we do. Move, approve, action?
Second.
All right, is there any further discussion amongst the council? All right, please vote.
By the way, I do appreciate the mayor and two other councilmembers really staying on top of this, so thank you. I think it's really important having councilmembers in close contact with these projects.
My screen says I'm voting for the renewal of the Newport Beach Restaurant Association.
The only way we can get your vote. All those in favor, seeking by saying aye.
No, hold on, motion carries unanimously, including Councilmember Petrus. There it goes.
I skipped item number nine, I believe.
So our request, Mr. Mayor, was just that this be pulled off calendar. We need to rework that and bring that back to you.
And I believe then it was continued under the, so I didn't skip.
That was the hope, yes.
I thought I made a mistake, but I was wrong. Item number 15, I believe we're back to Councilwoman Gardner once again.
Yeah, busy night. I think our council policy, L16, is in general a really good policy. We do make exceptions to it, and if the council wants to make an exception to this, you know, I'm not going to, I'm not a car person, but I know a lot of people are, and it might be a very popular event. However, I'm not quite sure why we would waive the fee. We're letting them have banners where ordinarily they wouldn't be permitted to have banners, we're waiving that particular policy, so why wouldn't we just ask them? We ask other people to pay the fee, why would we waive the fee?
May I speak to that?
Yes, Councilman Curry.
Because it's a major generator of income to the city. This event actually significantly fills our hotels. Selling the automobiles generates a certain degree of sales tax. There's a huge amount of people who come in to eat and dine in the city while they're at this event, and so it's a major economic generator and a large economic coup to be able to bring it into the city. Previously, they were doing one of these at the fairgrounds in Orange County, which was a big economic boon to Costa Mesa. We're very fortunate to be able to do it at the dunes.
Do we have, really, I mean, we had always said, every event we ever have is always bringing, I mean, the Film Festival and whatever, they're always bringing, filling up the hotel rooms, filling up the restaurants. Do we have any evidence at all that this is actually the case?
Well, I would say that our hotel revenues are at an all-time high, and our sales tax revenues are back to pre-recession levels. Now, you can attribute that, we can attribute that to a lot of different causes, but the fact that we have events in which we bring in people to the city, such as the BCS, such as the Russo and Steel event, are one of the reasons why our economy is doing so well here.
Don't we get the sales tax revenue from the cars that are sold at the auction?
Most, most, yes. And I believe that you look at it as a very nominal expense, as a goodwill gesture for significant revenue.
So who do we charge this encroachment fee to? Anybody? Because if we don't charge it to anybody, that's cool. But if we charge it to some nonprofit that's doing something, and we don't charge it to these guys, then I think that's, even though the nonprofit isn't bringing money in, I don't think that's a very good idea.
Do you remember, Dave, as to how often this is waived?
No, I don't. I know we have had requests for banners in the past, and I don't believe we've waived it for some of the other events that are non...
Although, I'm thinking, what do we do banners for? The CDM 5K, and that's a city-sponsored one, so we don't charge. Race for the Cure, I think, is coming up, so it's not that common. We can, I can provide everybody the backup on that. It was, my thought was along the line of Mr. Curry, that this has an economic value, and we like having them here, and I don't know if that's...
Well, I would just like, like to know, because I'd like to be consistent, at least, as a city in what we do.
We can pull that information.
And if we're going to waive it all the time because someone says they're going to bring economic benefit, fine, but, and if we're going to make all the nonprofits pay if they're not associated with the city or whatever, I mean, just let's be consistent about it, so if you can give us some information next time, that'd be great.
We'll do that, thank you.
You know, I think this is a, you know, it's really a gesture of goodwill towards Russo and Steel. It doesn't make that big of a difference to them, I don't think, but having this auto auction is a big deal to the city. A lot of cities would kill to have an event like this come to their city, and like's been expressed, it does bring a lot of revenue and a lot of attention and publicity to the city.
Well, I'll make a motion.
Is it true that it, that we do get the sales tax benefit from the sale of the autos at the...
That's my understanding. It has to do with where actually the sale occurred, as long as they're processing it at the auction in the site there. But we need to take a look at what percentage of that versus someone who does something the next day or otherwise at their home or through the internet.
So I'd make the motion to give them a break. And earlier in the budget session, you, someone mentioned that the, there's more tax coming from the cars because of the sale of Teslas that don't have dealerships. Is it the company store in Fashion Island that's...
It is.
Yeah, but you, having just bought a Tesla, I paid for it, I wrote the check in Costa Mesa at their service center. So I was wondering whether we got any sales tax out of... Mesa at their service center, so I was wondering whether we got any sales tax out of it or not.
I don't know, I don't see Dan here. He could run over, he's usually in his office, but we, Tesla recently, as recently as a year ago, changed the way that it does its sales site, and the sales that occur in their Newport Beach showroom are now attributed to us, regardless of where you would have written the check. Yeah.
We have a motion. We do not have a second yet. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion by the council? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item? Yeah, I believe you have already spoken on this item. Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Anybody else that would like to speak on this item? If not, I'll bring it back to the council. Please vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Public comments on non-agenda items.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on non-agenda items?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Hill and members of the City Council. I just thought of a non-agenda item very similar to the agenda item you just voted If Fletcher Jones or Tesla Motors wanted to advertise their year-end clearance, would the City Council consider waiving policy L-16 and the encroachment fee? Because it would seem to me that the arguments that could be made in favor of putting their banners up, advertising their clearance sale, pretty much the same as those that could be made in favor of Russo and Steel. The other non-agenda comment I wanted to make, since I apparently made the wrong comment during the agenda hearing about the Building Ad Hoc Committee, I take it now that we're talking about some other City Council Subcommittee that has somehow been appointed, not by the City Council, but by the city staff. There will be a similar item coming up later this evening. I was planning to comment on, I think it's a very strange world in which the staff is appointing council committees. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in the public that would like to speak on a non-agenda item, please come
My name is Mike Shepherd. I had a gift to give to the council members. I have a book on the beauty and history of Colonel Lamar. Just finished, published. Thank you.
He's there to take the books, not-
Think he was going to steal them.
The cover is a 1945 postcard that we renovated for the, for the book. A portion goes to Sherman Gardens, and I hope you each enjoy the book.
Thank you very much. That's very kind of you. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak? Then we are ready. I would like to make a comment, by the way, if I may. There is a significant difference between a Russo and Steel special event and a clearance sale by an existing business in town. A clearance sale by an existing business in town does not fill our hotels, does not fill our restaurants, does not fill the other aspects of shoppers that come in. The Russo and Steel event is an event that draws people in from all over the country, if not all over the world, of a very high-income level that enjoys Fashion Island, our hotels, and our restaurants. It's a significant win for the city to have an event of this type, and those are the kinds of events that we like hosting because they do not overly tax our infrastructure and they add to our quality of life. So there is a significant economic difference in an event like this. Thank you.
Further to the point of this issue about the Marina Park Committee, there was another great leap of faith that was in fact completely off-base. The city staff did not appoint this informal committee of council members. That never happens. So this is an informal group of the three of us that are helping to guide this project. That's all.
We will move on to oral reports from City Council members on committee activities. Councilwoman Gardner.
I have nothing.
Councilwoman Petros?
I have nothing.
Councilwoman Selig?
I have none.
Councilwoman Daigle?
A couple items. The Airport Land Use Commission met, and one of the items was the update of, or was the, a review of the general plan update for the city of Newport Beach, and to find that consistent with the airport plan, the A-loop as it's called. The commission staff, and they have a, an executive officer, she's been there 20 years, they recommended approval. The commission, on a three-to-two vote, did not make the findings. And I would simply note that many, many projects in the city of Irvine have been denied, so Newport Beach is not alone in having to override the commission, and I think there's a next item coming up on the calendar to review that item. And then, secondly, participated, attended the Southern California Association of Governments' General Assembly, and it was held in Indian Wells, and the, we had many supporters, among them the Lewis Operating Company. And Randall Lewis, he always gives an economic forecast, and his message this year is there's a glut of retail, and this is because we're shopping in new ways, there's less demand for storefront. And so what we're looking at is really transformation of strip malls to big malls, to create urban villages, residential and mixed use. Then we also had the Undersecretary of Transportation for the federal government, and he was in a pretty cool division. What he deals with is collision technologies as well as government programs, for example, with a Tesla, and getting that technology jump-started. He lives in DC in Phoenix, and he rode his motorcycle across the desert from Phoenix to Indian Wells, and it was during that period of pretty intense winds, so he said he pretty much rode sideways in. And then also, speaking of transportation with our interstates and the status of our federal budget, it may not be impossible down the line that we'll see toll roads on interstates, or certainly there'll be a lot of discussion about VMTs, as they're called, vehicle miles traveled, and fees associated with that. And then finally, on the bike safety front, co-wrote a resolution with San Ana Councilwoman Michelle Martinez on bike and pedestrian safety, and that passed unanimously, and is a panel discussion on bike safety. It's really becoming a big deal in a lot of cities, and certainly here in Orange County, we have OCTA making it a priority and stepping up with more funding. And as far as the millennials go, I've seen them on two issues in a political context, firings and bicycles, so maybe they'll show up in other areas, but they're also very big into bike riding. So that was our conference. Thank you.
Councilman Hen?
Two quick committee reports. The Tidlins Committee met on Wednesday, April the 23rd. We finished our review of the, and gave some guidance to the Harbor Commission regarding their planning for the Lower Castaways Park. We also reviewed and gave some guidance to staff regarding the Tidlins Infrastructure Capital Plan, and most importantly, discussed further the Balboa Island Seawall Planning, capital project planning, and gave some guidance to staff in respect of that. Then there was a Finance Committee meeting on Tuesday, April the 29th, and we did review the proposed budget and gave guidance to staff on that. We also provided some additional thoughts regarding the next revision to the facilities' financing plan, planning tool that we use, and then guidance regarding changes to our reserve policies, which I think will be coming back to council sometime soon, and then reviewed the proposed water, recycled water rate structure. And that was a good discussion as well, that I think will yield a recommendation to council sometime soon. That's it. Thank you.
Councilman Curry?
No report.
And I have no report. We'll move on to item number 19.
Good evening, Mayor Hill, members of council. I'm Kim Brant, your Community Development Director. This item on your agenda this evening is a public hearing, and I do thank Councilmember Daigle for giving an overview of this agenda item. As Councilmember Daigle indicated, on April 17th, the Airport Land Use Commission did consider the city's proposed amendment to the land use element of the general plan, that the review of the proposed element amendment is required by state law because the proposed changes occur within the, the planning area of the John Wayne Airport. The majority of the commission, in their review of the proposed changes, were most specifically concerned with the proposed additional residential units in the airport business area, and that was the primary reason or basis for their finding of inconsistency. Since the City Council is the final review authority on any legislative, let, excuse me, legislative act within the city of Newport Beach, the state law does provide a provision for the City Council to initiate a two-step process to override the determination of the Airport Land Use Commission. If the council may remember, back in 2013, the city completed a similar process for the Uptown Newport project located on Jamboree. So again, as I mentioned, this is a two-step process, and the first step in the process is for the City Council to adopt a resolution notifying both the Airport Land Use Commission as well as the State Division of Aeronautics that the City Council intends to initiate and go through the process. Both of those state agencies have the, have 30 days to respond to the City Council's resolution regarding the, as, have 30 days to respond to the resolution and the findings and the basis for the, for the ultimate notification or overrule process. In terms of when the second step would take place, that would have to occur before the City Council could take any action on the land use amendment project in its, of itself, and that would be the, the time in which the City Council would need to adopt the resolution overriding the Airport Land Use Commission's determination, and it's required to occur with a two-thirds vote. And actually, that your action this evening will also require a two-thirds vote of the City Council.
But this is not in any way having us opine on the value of the general, of the land use element amendment. This is just simply saying this is opening the door so we can consider it without worrying about the airport issue.
That is correct. Your action this evening does not predispose your ultimate action on the proposed land use element project. Additionally, your action or ultimately going through an overrule process does not affect the city's consistency standing with the, with the John Wayne Airport, with the Airport Environment's land use plan, and also it doesn't change any of the city's liability in relationship to, to a project within the, the planning area of the John Wayne Airport.
You will note in the report, it says the council's adoption of the notification resolution does not constitute the approval of project, nor does it predispose the council's further action. Any questions or comments?
I don't know if it's a question or a comment, but this strikes me as a perfect example of inconsistent planning. Right to the north of us, the city of Irvine, has approved 15,000 homes in the Irvine Business Complex. Many of those are in the neighborhood village. Many of those have already been built on Martin Street, for example, within a nine iron of the, the airport. To suggest that, that a concept that might allow us to do residential in the area would be inconsistent with 15,000 homes that are planned or built right up the road, I don't understand what the, what the difference is. Is it the Mason-Dixon line? Is there some differentiating characteristic in our areas compared to theirs?
Well, I think they, you know, they compare against plan, they don't compare against what's on the ground. And when you look at their plan, and they look at heights and imaginary surfaces and noise contours and these types of things-
They are built. The Martin Street apartments are built. Metropolis is built. Many of them are built and on the ground.
Yeah. I think the staff point is, is really key, that this action this evening is not preemptive in any way, you know, whatever general plan, whatever general plan update is ultimately fashioned, you know, this is, this is not preempting this, or the other way around.
Yes, and if I may just add a postscript to Councilmember Daigle's comment, the proposed residential uses or the addition of additional units within the airport business area would conform to the, the appropriate CNEL contours of, or noise contours of the airport. They would not be within the 65 CNEL noise contour, which is inappropriate for residential uses. Any future development would comply with the appropriate height standards as well as the standards of the safety zones. So staff believes that we, that the project as proposed would be consistent with the standards contained within the Airport Environment's land use plan.
Move the recommended action for override?
Is there a motion?
I'll second that.
All right.
Yeah, further to-
Yes, but not quite yet, not quite yet.
Further to Mr. Councilmember Petros's comments, I guess I've had the impression for some time that the Airport Land Use Committee is on some other page in some other book as it relates to reviewing these projects. It just doesn't seem to be any consistency of their actions.
Need to rebut that. All right. All right. No further comment now. I would like to open it to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make comment on this? Please come on down.
My name is Barry Allen, and I didn't intend to even speak on this issue, but I will advise you that there are a lot of people in this city who are very, very interested in the general plan, and this wasn't noticed or in any indication when I read the, when I read the, the agenda that was coming up, that it had anything to do with the general plan. And I think that you shouldn't even vote on this, because I think you should take this up when it's been agendized, so that the people who are concerned about the general plan and how this city may vote on the general plan can be here and speak on it. Because I think there's going to be an indication to the staff by the vote that's given here today as to how you're going to vote on the general plan, and the people aren't here to even talk on it. That's my public comment.
Thank you very much. I will read the comment once again. "The council's adoption of the notification resolution does not constitute the approval of project, nor does it predispose the city's future action." Please.
Thank you, Mayor Hill and members of the City Council. My name is Jim Mosher. This is kind of a rerun of the same issue that you faced in connection with the Uptown Newport development, I believe, on the very first meeting that you held in this chamber. As I felt then, I do not think it's in the city's interest to be overriding the decision of the Airport Land Use Commission. The Airport Land Use Commission voted to find this inconsistent because they were trying to protect the use and continued use of John Wayne Airport by small, private airplanes, a component of what is called general aviation. The difference between this land used by Newport, controlled by Newport Beach, and that in which the Irvine development is occurring, as I understand it, is that our property is under the flight path of the small airplanes when they go southbound and turn to the left. And it is in our interest, in our city's interest, to keep general aviation a vital component of John Wayne Airport. It's in our airport land use plan, City Council Policy A17, because the presence of those small airplanes, to some small extent, keeps a lid on the development of the airport for the larger commercial jets. Whether you or not you agree with that, I did read the staff report, and it tells you that at the meeting where you're asked to act on this, you will need to make specific required findings, that the overruling the Airport Land Use Commission is consistent with the purposes of Public Utilities Code, Section 21670, and anticipating what you would be doing in 45 days from now, I did look at what that section says, and the purpose of the Public Utilities Code section that sets up the Airport Land Use Commission, the purpose is to protect the public health, safety, and welfare through the adoption of land use measures that minimize the public's exposure to excessive noise and safety hazards when, within areas around public airports. If I was sitting where you are, I would have difficulty explaining to anybody how increased development, particularly residential, in an area under the- development, particularly residential, in an area under the flight path of the airplanes is minimizing exposure to excessive noise and safety hazards. I think that will be a difficult finding for you to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak on this topic?
Mr. Mayor, if I may debunk the myth that somehow putting residents up there will scare away general aviation, the fact is, is if your airport gets federal funds, then you're mandated to accommodate all aviation uses. So it's really a silly theory.
Well, and while we're debunking myths, it's not in the flight plan either.
Further comments from the council? Then please vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Item number 20, please.
Dave Webb, your Public Works Director, Mayor, council members. This is a project we talked about a little earlier. This is the award of the Phase 6 of the Traffic Modernization Project. This will be putting in the modernization elements on San Joaquin Hills and Newport Coast Road, which includes new controllers, Ethernet cables, fiber optics, closed-circuit TV cameras, and new controllers. We went out to public bid on this, and we've received 10 bids. Our low bid is Eleknor Belko Electric for $734,072, and we recommend awarding this contract.
Comments from council?
Well, I will move approval. I think this is a great project. It's about time to get on San Joaquin Hills and Newport Coast. I'm glad to see we're finally there. Thank you.
I'll second it.
Further comments by the council? I'd like to open public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this topic? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Please vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Item number 21. Staff report, please.
So, Mr. Mayor and council members, as the staff group comes up and the consultants, this is the sculpture in the Civic Center Park exhibition, proposed exhibition, and I'll hand it off to Tara so she can explain who's going to speak and what order.
Good evening again, Mayor and council members. This evening, we will have a brief presentation by Arts Orange County, but first, I'd like to introduce Commissioner Robert Smith, Arts Commissioner Robert Smith, to update you briefly on how we brought the recommendations to you this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Hill, council members. I'm Robert Smith, one of the arts commissioners, and have been chairing our subcommittee on the Civic Center Sculpture Park Exhibition. And I'm very pleased tonight to bring to you the 10 sculptures that the Arts... I'd also like to acknowledge that a number of my fellow commissioners are here tonight, Commissioner Goldberg, Greer, Logan, and Ware. And this is a project we're very excited about. To make the formal presentation tonight, we've asked the consultants from Arts OC, Rick Stein, and from Green Public Arts Consultancy, Rebecca Ansert, to make that presentation. They've been very helpful in the process, and after the presentation, if you have any questions, we'll be very pleased to answer those. But we think we've got a collection of 10 extraordinarily good sculptures that represent a number of types of sculpture and that we think the public will enjoy seeing. So with that, I'll ask Rick and Rebecca to come up and make a PowerPoint presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Hill and members of the council. Tonight, we will present to you...
I'm sorry to interrupt, if you could give us your name for the record.
Oh, yes, I'm Rick Stein from Arts Orange County.
Thank you, Rick.
Tonight, we will present to you outstanding works sprung from the imagination of and handcrafted by 10 seasoned or emerging artists from throughout the United States. They have been selected from 260 submissions and judged by a panel of outside experts as well as members of the city's own arts commission. These works range from the serious to the whimsical, from the figurative to the abstract. Among them are works made of wood, metal, stone, or composed entirely of found materials that have been recycled. All will be situated on the northern slopes of Civic Center Park in positions established by the landscape architect of Civic Center Park and reviewed for those positions by city staff. Once they are in place, for a period of two years, the public will be drawn to contemplate, laugh at, sit upon, walk around, and marvel at large-scale, one-of-a-kind sculptures that celebrate the human spirit, and we look forward to sharing them with you now. A few bits of information about the process that has been shared with you in your packets for tonight. The process opened in January, and the panel made its final selections in March. The jury panel included Dan Cameron, interim director and chief curator of the Orange County Museum of Art, along with other experts, and your own arts commissioners. We had detailed selection criteria related to artistic merit, the durability of the materials used, the practicality of placing them on the site, and of course, the appropriateness for the site. The 10 selected works also had three alternates in case one artist or more might not be able to participate, and we did have one artist who thought that Newport was Newport, Rhode Island, not Newport Beach, and he could not afford to send his work out this way. So our alternate number one was selected. And here you'll see the site locations that were identified by your own landscape architect for placement of sculptures. I'm now going to turn it over to Rebecca Ansert.
Landscape architect of the park itself?
Yes.
Yeah, it was PWP that came up with an art master plan.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Ansert, and I am the principal of Green Public Art Consultancy, and pleased to be a part of this team to kick off the inaugural sculpture exhibition here in the city. It's my pleasure that I get to share all of the pretty images with you. We're going to start with Kurt Brill, who has brought to us a piece called Brandy. Kurt is an established artist who has been practicing for over 30 years. He currently lives in New York. The artist has a keen eye for the figure and great ability to capture the human spirit with a sense of humor. Brandy, a bronze measuring about five feet by five feet, sits on a large slab of granite. The artwork will be sited in the landscaped area adjacent to the pedestrian bridge in the Upper Park. Its location will allow for visitors to sit down and take a picture with Brandy. The next artist, Chris Wrench, brought us Red Gateway. Chris Wrench is a self-taught industrial engineer and product designer in the sporting goods industry. In 2005, he turned his attention to designing and fabricating large-scale abstract sculptures. His work is primarily stainless and mild steel, and Chris has participated in various public exhibitions across the country and currently lives in Oregon. The work in our exhibition is a powder-coated steel sculpture and measures eight feet high by 20 feet long. The artwork will be sited at the base of a large knoll along MacArthur Boulevard, and the artwork will be best viewed from within the park and will not be visible from the boulevard. The next artist, Jonathan Prince, brought us Red. Jonathan Prince is a Massachusetts-based artist. He shapes stones and steel into elegant, expressive, abstract sculptures, drawing inspiration from masters like Brancusi. Prince resurrected his latent passion for sculpture in 2004 after a distinguished and diverse professional career as a feature film producer and director of numerous computer-animated special effects projects. Composed of a black Zimbabwe granite, this sculpture is about five and a half feet high and sits on a large steel platform. The artwork will be best experienced by walking along the park's pathway and stopping to sit on a nearby bench. Roberto Acier brings us Cub Triptych. Acier began creating origami cranes as a young boy to escape his unstable home life. Acier is a fast-growing art star from Los Angeles and was recently collected by the University Hospital Case Medical Center Sculpture Garden in Cleveland, Ohio. The artwork is a collection of three powder-coated steel pieces, a standing bear, a sitting bear, and a crouching bear on top of a box. Cub Triptych will be installed in the landscaped area adjacent to the Sidewinder bench and is certain to be loved by children and adults alike. At its highest point, the crouching bear and crate measures almost nine feet. Hmm, that's interesting. There it is.
Box come with it?
It does, yes. There it is. Matt Babcock, Big Wet Dog. Matt Babcock's Big Wet Dog is made from powder-coated steel and measures over seven feet long from the dog's nose to the tip of the tail. The artist's goal as a sculptor is to do a lot with a little, creating complex, changing impressions using simple forms and materials. He takes inspiration from the structure and behavior of his subjects, and he makes public art because he believes that public spaces reflect the ways communities and individuals think of themselves in relation to others and to the larger world. Big Wet Dog will be installed at the Upper Park near the parking lot entrance along Avocado. We like the sighting of this piece because it will act as a subtle indicator of the dog park located at the end of the winding path. Ivan McLean brings us Sphere 108. Ivan McLean is a sculptor who lives in Portland, Oregon, and he works with a variety of materials and styles. Sphere is a repetitive form found in the artist's portfolio, but this iteration is one of his largest. The particular sculpture is created from scrap stainless steel rod materials found in the artist's studio. The artwork is sited on an embankment in the Upper Park adjacent to the pedestrian bridge and will be visible from Avocado. The unique aspect of this artwork is its transparent quality, which may seem, which may cause it to seemingly disappear when viewing it from above. Jennifer Sisser, Double Doily. Jennifer Sisser has long focused on creating monumental versions of hand-crocheted doilies with a variety of materials, from parachute nylon and construction barrier fencing to a now more permanent palette of powder-coated steel. Through her exploration of needlework, often done by women in the privacy of their own homes, this New York artist brings us the feeling of handmade craft to the city. Her work has been exhibited extensively in spaces like MoMA PS1 Contemporary Art Center, Socrates Sculpture Park, and a new permanent public art commission for the Cleveland Public Transit System. Double Doily, Jennifer's first three-dimensional iteration of her doily series, is about five feet high and painted all white. It will be sited near the top of the Lower Park, under a shade canopy of trees, and angled so one can sit and view another artwork in the exhibition Red Gateway from afar. Arnie Nadler's Wintering... Arnie Nadler is a sculptor and associate professor of art at Washington University in St. Louis. The vessel forms of Wintering reveal an expertly welded steel form, delicately painted a slate color that appears half-metallic and half-earthen. The larger-than-life, unfillable vessels suggest a desire to endure hard weather and may subtly suggest a rainwater harvesting cistern. Rainwater harvesting cistern. The artwork will be installed on a large grassy knoll and will be visible from Avocado. Each vessel measures 12 feet high and is about five feet round. Park visitors are able to walk up to and circumnavigate the artwork to get an up-close-and-personal sensation of the mass and texture of the artwork's form. David Buckingham brings us Pretty Boy. David Buckingham scours alleys, abandoned factories, industrial areas, and low deserts of Southern California in search of discarded and forgotten materials like wheelbarrows, toolboxes, road signs, and tractor parts. Pretty Boy is a composite of many of Buckingham's found materials, and it's interesting to note that all of the colors are original as found. David Buckingham is not a painter. The sculpture standing at 11 feet tall will greet visitors on top of a small berm along Avocado Avenue and will be best viewed from walking along the path. The final piece in the exhibition that we're talking about tonight is by Ray Katz. It's titled Odyssey. Ray Katz is a professor of art at the Oakland Community College, where he teaches sculpture, drawing, and design. The artist's abstract manipulation of form in space creates visual balance. Using rhythm, action, and movement, he combines compositions that convey the implied energy found in his work. Odyssey will be the largest sculpture in the exhibition, measuring 22 feet at its highest point, and will straddle over the Lower Park's walkway, which will give one an opportunity to walk underneath the artwork. We like that this monumental white sculpture mimics the white architectural elements of the new Civic Center and utilities at the Civic Center's entrance. The artwork will be very visible from the Civic Center entrance and will act as a visual gateway to indicate to visitors that there is artwork in the park. That concludes my presentation.
Comments from the council? Questions from the council?
Well, from my perspective, I think council should stay away from being art selectors and, but more focus on whether or not the process was an appropriate one and well-guided and well-represented by the judgment of the people involved, and I think this process passes with that, all of those tests with flying colors, and so I congratulate you on your recommendations.
I agree. I'm sure that each of us could find one to say, "Well, I'd rather have something else." But I respect the expertise of the experts, and I, for one, I think we have a wonderful selection. There's something for everyone, and I like the way they're sited. I particularly thought, I like the whimsy of the dog at the dog park and the fact that we, that so much of this... I, for one, am someone who am always frustrated when I go to a museum because I can't touch. This is just going to be awesome.
I understand councilman Salidge would like to be an art critic.
I am not qualified to be an art critic. However, I'm very pleased with the way the process worked out. I thought the Arts Commission did a tremendous job in reaching out to the arts community, getting so many submissions in. This is an integral part of our Civic Center complex. It's been part of the plan from day one. I remember when we were first starting this project that one of the criticisms was that we were building a passive park that no one would use here. I think with the sculptures, the play elements we have for the children, the bunnies, if you will, the dog park, the trails we have going through, they're all contributing to make this probably one of the most vibrant, if not the most vibrant, park in the city, and I think this will be a terrific addition to it. So my congratulations to the commission.
Well, I also, I don't think the council ought to be art critics either, so I congratulate the commission. I know they worked very hard on this process and our consultants as well. And to those who would look at this and say it's all sort of abstract or expressionist, I would say, wait a couple of years, we'll bring something else in when we rotate the exhibit, and we'll have an opportunity for different styles of art and different traditions and different eras to be presented in the park. So I look forward to this. I'm sure it will be controversial to some, but I also think it will be something that will attract people to come and get people talking about the park.
I also think, I just want to, so much has been made, from the council's point of view, of increasing the art profile of the city, and this is a huge step, just a huge step forward.
I do have a question. Will each piece of art be accompanied with a plaque and a narrative similar to what you've presented tonight?
We do have plans to identify each with a plaque.
Very good. By happenstance, last weekend was at Cal Poly, San Luis Obispo, weekend before last, and the sphere, three of those were there. And I guess we're just engineers at heart, but there was two of us that stood there for about a half an hour, and we could not figure out how. He made it perfect, but it was perfect. It was a very exciting piece of sculpture, so. I'm sure there's something here that will insult someone, everyone, one piece, and I'm sure there's at least one piece here that will delight everyone, but I guess that's what art's all about. And so I agree that the process is what's important. I was very impressed, and you kind of skipped over the panel that created this, but the interim director and chief curator of the Orange County Museum of Art, artist and co-director of the Guggenheim Gallery at Chappelle University, and an art conservator with Rosa Lowing, I guess it is, and associates, as well as three of our own art commissioners, Rita Groberg, Robert Smith, and Charles Ware. I think that's a qualified... I think that's a qualified panel. I'm not going to try to outguess them, so I applaud the process.
I guess I would just make one other comment. I agree, this is a giant step forward, and I did read, we did receive some, a couple of pieces of correspondence in opposition to these pieces, one of which, I think, at least one suggested that maybe we should spread them around to other parks. Actually, I'm glad we have these in the Civic Center park, but in addition to that, I would love it if we could spread art around the other parks in our city, and so I'm hoping we're going to have opportunities to do that, too. Love to see it everywhere.
Further comment from the council? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
I would then like to throw this open to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this topic tonight? If so, please come down.
Barry Allen. After all the laudatory comments by the city council, I feel like Don Quixote, and I realize I am Don Quixote. I'm jousting at windmills, but I intend to give my opinion. I heard about this. I heard about how the process was going through, and I expected that there would be a nice mix of sculptors and things that would be submitted by the Arts Council and would be put in the park. And I realized that, like art, I wouldn't like everything, but there'd certainly be more than a fair sampling of them that I would like, or at least I would try and understand. My comments on number one is you've got to be kidding. Number two, it's a red gate. It's a gateway to hell. That's what it really looks like, and that's the way people are going to describe it. Number three, because it's shiny, and that's all. It's shiny. That's the way it was described in the email. Three modern lime-green bears. Nice thing about that is they seem to match, at least the big two, with the lovely lime-green, shiny green on the parking structure that all of us can see as we drive down MacArthur or look across MacArthur. So I guess it sort of fits in with the lime-green and the parking structure. I just wonder why someone couldn't make a bear that looked like a bear, but I guess nobody submitted anything like that. Big Wet Dog. I don't think it looks much like a dog, but maybe it does to the artist, and I guess that's his reason for it. But it doesn't look like a dog. I think people are going to look at it, and it's going to have a sign on it that says "Big Wet Dog," or whatever it's going to be called, and I guess they'll understand. Number six, I like the sphere. I think it's beautiful. Number seven, the doily, I think is a beautiful thing, and also it's something you can sit on, you know, something we're supposed to have in the park, a lot of benches, and this is another bench. Number nine is really the one that gets me. You know, when you look at that and look where it's positioned, it's pointing at City Hall with that hand of his, and he's called Pretty Boy. And what do you think that the committee, how the committee came up with putting that particular one that looks like that pointing at this City Hall? Odyssey, the only thing I can say about that is that it's odd, and my only comment is, why didn't somebody submit something like Auguste Rodin, you know, the man who did The Thinker? I mean, nothing even looks like anything he did. Or how about something that was done by Michelangelo? We see many of his statues everywhere. Nothing even looks like that. Can't we make an animal like a bear, or a dog, or a cat, or a horse, or even a human, look like a human and be artwork? I guess not, not in the view of the particular art commission here and in the view of the city council, because you're all very praiseworthy of it. Thank you very much for your time.
We do have rabbits.
Sorry? I didn't say anything against the rabbits.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I didn't say anything against the rabbits. In fact, I thought the big rabbit was cute. I thought the little rabbits were a little overdone, but not a big deal with me, not a big deal. This stuff is just plain ugly, folks. It's just plain ugly.
But at least the rabbits look like rabbits, though.
They do look like rabbits. They certainly do.
And there'll be 20 of them next year, so.
There won't be. I found out that they're asexual. They don't have anything.
I stand corrected. Please give us your name.
Mayor Hill and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I want to thank at least two of you for calling attention at the beginning of this to the process. My comment to that is that with 260 entries, I think the city missed an opportunity to engage the public in the process of selecting the public's artwork. And I would like you to know that the city arts commission, at least publicly, saw nothing more than you saw here tonight. They did not see or consider what the other 250 entries were. I have no idea what was rejected. But since art is about seeing and vision, I'm not going to talk actually about the art, but I wanted to talk about the transparency of this process and two problems with that. I already warned you that I was going to say something more about committees and how they get appointed. On the second page of your staff report, you see the listing of this jury panel that did apparently see the 260 selections or choices and made the selection on our behalf, on behalf of the public. The committee consists of, I did not know how the committee was created. It has six art commissioners on it. It has six so-called, three arts commissioners, three so-called experts. Apparently, it was put together by the consultant. Had that committee been appointed by the arts commission to do this task, that committee would have been subject to the Brown Act because it consists of people making a decision who are not part of the appointing body. And the meetings would have been noticed. The public could have seen how the decision has been made and perhaps even influenced But I don't know, I don't know how the other three people got on there, along with the arts commissioners, so I can't exactly say that. It's a violation or not, but it's like this mysterious building committee that has appeared out of somewhere. Second comment I wanted to make is about the consultant, and I don't want to pick on Mr. Stein, but in the city clerk's office, there is a large book of forms that the department directors, division directors fill out, determining whether city consultants have to reveal their financial conflicts of interest. And this happens to be the form for Mr. Stein of Arts OC, and it came to the conclusion that he isn't exempt from the conflict of interest rules that a normal city employee doing the same function would do. And I just wanted to bring this attention to you because that's what happens in the vast majority of these, and it seems to be the wrong conclusion, because there's a box above this that says the consultant performing the service is acting, there's substantial, he's acting in a sort of a staff position, and there's a substantial likelihood that his work project, presented either orally or in writing, will be presented for the purpose of influencing a government decision, in which cases financial conflicts have to be revealed. And if this is not a written or oral presentation that's trying to influence a government decision, I don't know what it is, yet that box is not checked. There's something wrong with this form. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public that would like to come and comment on this
Good evening. My name is Jim Warren, and I live across the street at 1201 Surfline Way. And I thought the presentation was very good tonight, and the art commission did a lot of work on it and everything, and they considered how it would look from different streets, but not at one time did they consider how it would look to the neighbors who live above the project, which is a completely different view. And it's a view that should be considered, because when we went into the development of this city hall, part of the agreement was that the front part of the property would be to develop and build the building. The rear part of the property would be pretty much a natural wildlife thing and the beauty of the animals and stuff that we had here. This art project that has come to our view doesn't fall into either one of those categories. And I do appreciate them wanting to come to Newport Beach, and it was me that Mr. Hen mentioned, that should, each of the articles be taken off to a different part of Newport Beach and put in their parks so those people could enjoy it. And that giving the opportunity, after a year's period of time, they could evaluate it themselves and see if they liked us going in this direction. I don't think that would work out too well. I just really don't know. And I know that most of the people in this room don't have to look at these 24 hours a day for two years, and we do. They're there. That's our backyard, and it is kind of discourting. It really is. It bothers us. And I know that, you know, we have a museum here, right in Newport Center, that a lot of these projects could be shown there so that people in this area could enjoy it. That plus the others, the parks that I've mentioned, would give them ample opportunities. The size is just an amazing thing of some of these projects, and I like art. I do show cars. There's concourse cars in Newport Beach. You talk about the auction coming. We all love those. I bring a trailer into my neighborhood just to load my car, and I could only stay there 24 hours, and the neighbors are really nice about it, and they let me load and get out. One time I didn't. A Newport Beach city policeman came and gave me a ticket, and we couldn't move because we had a mechanical problem. I paid the bill. Now, this is just a trailer that's the same size of one of the art projects, sitting on a street in Newport Beach for 24 hours, getting a ticket, and you're asking us to look at this same-sized object for two years out our window. Something's wrong here. We weren't given this opportunity to present ourselves prior to them getting your unanimous approval. I'm disappointed. We should have had this opportunity to get this done, not two days' notice. And I know you've bought the program. I can just tell by the comments. This isn't right. You don't have to look at it 24 hours a day for two years. You wouldn't have it in your neighborhood. You wouldn't do that. I wouldn't see any of you approving it if it were. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this this evening?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Brian Smith, and I did not bring a prepared speech for you folks this evening. I am a hard-working, tax-paying citizen of this city, and I also have the good fortune of being one of your neighbors. I also live here in the row of houses that immediately looks upon the park. And likewise, I find it difficult to imagine that any of you would want any of these in your backyard or in your front yard, and this entire property is our backyard. And I do have to give you due credit. When the building first went up and the sail was lit on the front of the building that promptly lit up our homes, much like a spotlight would, you guys were good neighbors, and turned that off and had it on on a relatively infrequent basis, and I want to express my appreciation for that. That being said, we're talking about very sizable pieces of art, eight, 10, 12, 15 feet high, that at least half of which are effectively in my backyard, and I find it hard to imagine that any of you would actually choose that for your own homes. So I would ask you to please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item tonight? If not, I'll bring it back to the council. Any further comments by the council?
Mayor Hill. Yeah, back around the turn of the century, the Beaux-Arts event was hosted in Paris, and at that time, it was a three-story exhibit, and a new artist, a guy named Auguste Renoir, was presenting on the second floor when Monet was down, I believe, on the first or the third. And they were laughed out of Paris. That's not art. That's ugly. That's reprehensible. I don't understand it. It's the worst possible thing that I've ever seen. Yet today, those same pieces are held in high esteem. They're considered masterpieces, timeless, and we all now understand them. I'm not one to be a judge of art. That's not what I know, but I do know that these are evocative pieces, and actually, I would have them around where I live. I like that, I like standing under that big sculpture at the Lacma indoors, that large sculpture that's there. But be that as it may, I think my colleagues have all said, it's not about us being art critics. It's about, was this a fair process? And I believe it was. We have been speaking for two years now about an arts master plan, about art in the park. It should come as no surprise to anyone, given the number of public hearings we've had about this, that this is something that the city has said publicly that they are in support of, and I think that we're now ready to launch. And I think that this is going to bring great, great esteem on the city of Newport Beach, so I, too, will be supporting this.
Mr. Mayor? Yes? I'd like to move the action. We have a motion. Is there a second for this item?
I'll second.
All right. Is there any further discussion by the council? And please vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Item number 22.
So, Mr. Mayor and council members, this is an item brought to you because it's a large-dollar item. This is the renewal, in effect, of our agreement for airborne law enforcement services, AKA the police helicopter, from the city of Huntington Beach. You have the contract in front of you. We've been using them now for, I think, three years, and I think the police chief would confirm that it's been a successful relationship with you, so I'd welcome any questions. I know the chief would as well. Otherwise, we'd return that to you for a motion, hopefully.
Are there any questions of staff or the chief?
Move the item.
Second.
Just a real quick, can we get just a sense of the dollar savings of this approach in partnership with Huntington Beach versus the old Abel system? Do we have a number for that?
See if the chief knows that number better than I do.
Mr. Ballpark.
Yes, we're paying about 1.2 million a year for about 500 flight hours. Now we're paying about $700,000 for 1,000 flight hours, so almost half the price for twice the flight hours.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Another good decision. Any further comment? We have a motion. I would like now open it up to the public for comment. Anyone from the public like to comment on this? Seeing no one, I'll bring it back to the council.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
I need to ask our city attorney, as we are going to recess back to closed session, do we, would it be appropriate for a motion for reconsideration at this point, or should we wait to see if there's a report out from closed session?
Yes, we have to come back into open session, so I think just hold the motion for reconsideration until we come back.
All right. Then at this point in time, we will recess for a brief period back to closed session. Then at this point in time, we will recess for a brief period back to closed session. I'll call the Newport Beach City Council meeting back into session. Mr. City Attorney, do we have anything to report from closed-door session?
There is no closed-door session report this evening, Mayor Hill.
All right. Then in that case, I will call or ask for a motion for reconsideration. Are there any council members that have a motion for reconsideration? Seeing none, we will adjourn this evening, and Councilman Currie has a special adjournment message.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're adjourning tonight in memory of George Schumacher. He passed suddenly from complications resulting from a recent surgery. George was one of my neighbors in Harbor Ridge and a great neighbor and friend to many of us. He's the eldest son of late Hans and Margaret Schumacher, who resided in San Marino, California. George graduated from Mission High School in 1956 and Occidental College in 1960 with a B.S. in economics. He continued his graduate studies at UCLA. After college, George served in the National Guard as a staff sergeant. His first job out of college was in sales with General Electric in 1960, and he broke into commercial real estate in 1963. In 1969, George co-founded Pentapacific Properties in Los Angeles. George was a larger-than-life figure in the industry and possessed a vibrant and high-energy persona. He enjoyed respect and friendship from clients, investment partners, and fellow brokers with his in-depth professional knowledge and effective decision-making. He cast a wide net throughout Southern California with his multifaceted career as an industrial developer, broker, joint venture investor, philanthropist, and community leader. George was a Renaissance man who possessed many talents, and he would have been suited to be as a college professor. He loved to teach about business subjects along with inspiring life lessons. George is survived by his wife Bonnie. He resides in Newport Beach. Children Eric Knick, Dr. Victoria Schumacher, Julie King, Natasha Rowan, eight grandchildren, brother John Schumacher, sister Karen Poindexter, preceded in death by her sister Susan Robinson. Life well-lived. He will be missed by many. May God bless him.
And with that, we stand adjourned.